Yeah, that's good.
Good evening. Welcome to the May 1, 2024 School Committee Meeting. District Vision, "The Barnstable Public Schools Educates the Whole Child by Creating a Student-Centered School Culture That Addresses Students' Physical, Social, Emotional, and Academic Needs by Creating a Safe and Healthy Learning Environment in Which Students Are Challenged, Supported, and Engaged." Core Values: In Barnstable Public Schools, we value commitment, collaboration, and community. Commitment: We are dedicated to the continuous learning and growth for all. Collaboration: We work together while keeping student needs at the center of all decision-making. Community: We build strong, respectful partnerships that support student success. Item 1.2, Statement by the Chair, Video or Audio Recording of Meeting. This school committee meeting is being recorded and broadcast on the Tana Barnstable's Government Access Channel. In accordance with Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 20, the chair must inquire whether anyone else is recording this meeting, and if so, to please make their presence known. Item 2.0, Highlights in Education. 2.1, The Superintendent Academic Excellence Award Recipients. Sarah?
Thank you. Every year, I have the honor to bestow the Certificate of Academic Excellence on two members of the graduating class. This is sponsored by the Professional Association of School Superintendents here in Massachusetts. And the award criteria includes a three-year cumulative grade-point average, rank in class, and personal selection by the superintendent. One of our award recipients is here this evening, Ms. Julia Magalies, who I will invite up to the podium.[145.66][145.66][applause] Julia is truly a spectacular student, and I've really enjoyed getting to know her over the past year. She and her parents joined me and the other award recipient and his parents at a special dinner at Cape Cod Regional Technical School back at the beginning of April with Ms. Friedman, where other Cape and Islands award winners were also recognized. She has wonderful, superior academic abilities and is an incredible critical thinker with an impressive weighted GPA of 4.67, participating in our most demanding courses throughout her high school career with outstanding success. She's a member of the school's Spanish National Honor Society, where she serves as secretary, the BHS National Honor Society, where she serves as secretary, and the Math National Honor Society, where she serves as president. In her junior year, Julia was recognized by the faculty for her commitment to education and the school community with the Suffolk College Book Award. And I don't think it's here in her bio, but she was also announced at one of our school committee meetings related to a college board recognition that she got for her achievement on AP exams. Julia is bilingual in Portuguese and English and is completing her fifth year of Spanish in the classroom this year. She is serving as one of our student ambassadors at BHS, where she helps support new students to the building and rising eighth graders coming to our school. She travels to the middle school to work with our rising English-language learning students and will assist with the registration process of our ELLs at the high school, helping to translate important school information and taking students on tours of their new classroom locations. She's excited about her college years, where she plans to pursue a major in criminal justice and begin her journey of becoming a lawyer. Julia is participating in our senior internship, interning four days a week with the Community Action Committee of Cape Cod and Islands in Hyannis, working specifically in the Immigration Resource Center. Julia is learning about the laws and regulations that impact immigrants in the United States. She is very passionate about this work, and this experience aligns specifically with her education and long-term goals of career in the legal profession. Julia is a standout member of the varsity soccer team and is serving as team captain this year. She has been dancing since the age of three and has been perfecting her craft for the past five years at Dance Design Studios and pretty much pursues every genre of dance that exists. She practices at least 10 hours per week and annually competes in Boston, New York, Providence, and Florida. In her busy schedule, she also finds time to work in the community. Since eighth grade, she has worked at Gone Chocolate to help prepare, put on display, and sell the wonderful treats at the family favorite store. She values the importance of work in her life and saving for her future. Julia is a rising star and will make an exceptional lawyer in the future and is pursuing enrollment at Cornell University in the fall. Congratulations to Julia. I'm so thrilled to recognize you again here publicly for your academic and community service excellence at Barnstable High School.[347.12][347.12][applause]
Any comments?
Go ahead, Jen.
Yeah, I mean, what do you do in your spare time? Any hobbies? Like, your parents must be incredibly proud of you, you know? Congratulations.
Thank you.
Yeah, Julia, if you multiply my GPA in high school by two, you wouldn't reach 4.67 that you have attained. I'll tell you, what a resume, absolutely fabulous, and I wish you all the luck in the future, and congratulations.
Thank you.
Yes, I'll just concur with my fellow school committee members in congratulating you. It's a long list of achievements, and I'm glad that we went through the entirety of it here to honor your hard work and dedication, and so the best of luck in your future endeavors. I think these type of moments, it's about you, but then it's also about what's possible for so many students to see the hard work. And a lot of times, of course, that goes in the background, on the periphery, so it's great that we could see and recognize all those achievements today. In conclusion, I'm familiar with Gone Chocolate off of Main Street in Osterville, and hopefully there'll be some, I'll be seeing you, and we'll just contribute to the good things that are going on, maybe a gift card.
I'm not going to keep you up here any longer than you have, than you want to be, so congratulations, keep up the good work and good job, unbelievable job, so congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations, and have a wonderful time at Cornell, it's beautiful up there.
Bye, Julia, thank you. If I might, I'd like to also share a little bit about the other award recipient, Owen Jones. He couldn't be here this evening, he plays baseball, and so games are often on Wednesday nights, so we tried to recognize them at the April meeting. Now here we are in May, I'm not sure that June will work either, given the baseball schedule. But I do want to recognize this academic excellence winner. Owen and his parents also joined me and Ms. Friedman at the dinner a month ago. He too has participated in our most demanding courses throughout his high school career with excellent success and a 4.74 GPA. He's a leading student athlete in hockey and baseball throughout his entire high school career. His work ethic is uncanny, and he is always willing to go the extra mile to completely understand the ins and outs of complicated course material. He too is participating in our senior internship program, in which he is working with EMTs from the Hyannis Fire Department to further expand on his interest and knowledge of the medical field. He's thrilled to be gaining firsthand experience in the emergency treatment of others and looks forward to building his knowledge base in the medical arena as he enters his college years. The last I heard, he was debating between Notre Dame and Cornell, I'm not, he has also chosen Cornell. I think that may be three students who are heading to Cornell this fall. He was nominated to the school's National Honor Society and Math Honor Society in his junior year and has been a leading member of the BHS Future Problem Solvers Team since his eighth-grade year, and his talents have helped the team reach international competition for the past two years. He was recently recognized by the staff as this year's National Society Daughters of the American Revolution Good Citizens Award. This award is given annually by the school to the student that demonstrates the greatest service, patriotism, and leadership in the school and community. Owen's peers also respect him immensely and have nominated him class president for the past three years. One of his greatest contributions to the school community is his involvement in the creation of the BHS Peer Mediation Program. As the leading student member of this program, he's helped the administration identify the needs of our students and assisted in the development of a peer-based mediation program to help students in social dilemmas. He's also been extremely involved with BHS Best Buddies Program and is the current treasurer. In doing so, he helps to organize and run various events and activities for the best buddies to enjoy and participate. Owen's leadership and involvement in the BHS Military Support Club has been extraordinary over the years. He's been instrumental in raising money for the Wounded Warrior Project and assisting in the Wreaths Across America campaign. Owen is a rising star and undoubtedly will make a great doctor in the future as he pursues his studies at Cornell, so congratulations to Owen.[640.04][640.04][applause]
Thank you. Item 2.2, Barnstable Intermediate School Field Trip to Washington, D.C.
Good evening. We have just completed our first annual BIS seventh-grade Washington, D.C. field trip. It was a raving success, I think. Before I let the students speak, and as the students are going to be speaking here, I just want to say, and I know Ms. Walsh wants to say, how proud we were of all of them who joined us, all 68 of those students, who really rose up, you know, we have our rise matrix, they chose to rise while they were in Washington, D.C. We were so impressed with them. So, with no further ado, ladies and gentlemen, why don't you explain what we're going to see on these slides, okay?
First things first, I do want to say thank you to all of you guys who made this trip possible for us. The trip was amazing, as we've got to go for three whole days, basically, despite the gruellingly long drive, but it was definitely worth the wait for the amazing experience we got. We got to see all of the monuments and memorials that we see in our books and our textbooks that we're studying, learning about our history, and we got to see it in person, which is something that was really, honestly inspiring, because you always hear about the patriotism, but you never really get to experience it fully. We saw the Washington Monument, the World War II Monument, all of these things, like, that was just the first day. We even got to the Lincoln Memorial and walked down the National Mall. On the second day was even more jam-packed, because, what did we do on the second day, guys? There's a lot of stuff.
The second day was the Capitol Building.
Oh, yes, that was one of the best days I've had on any vacation, because we started out at the White House, getting to view where our president lived. So we got to stand on the White House, standing a little too close to the bar, but that's okay. After that, we went to, which one was it? It was the Capitol Building, the Capitol Building and Supreme Court. It was, we got to go inside as visitors, we got to see, I mean, we got to see the Capitol Building, we got to see the big, like, the inside, we saw videos that explained the information about it. We got to see all of the Supreme Court, all the statues. It was honestly really cool to see how those things have been standing for hundreds of years, which is one personal note that I'll have. And we got to see everything else, the beautiful paintings, I mean, the artwork was amazing. And even if the Supreme Court was closed off a little bit, because they were actually in a, they were in like a meeting right then, it was still really cool to see all the news teams outside dealing with real events that happened in our country right now. Then after that, we got to go to Mount Vernon, which is where we got to see where George Washington lived, and that was really interesting. We saw where all the slaves worked, we saw where the food and the resources were built. We got the beautiful view of Mount Vernon, even if it was raining, it was still a beautiful view over the river. And that was my personal experience, but I'm not going to talk for too long, so I'll let someone else type in, like.[875.04][875.04][applause]
Chris, Zoe, Thomas, Brandon?
It looks like you made me back up around two. There we go.
Tell us about the Holocaust Museum, tell us about the Arlington National Cemetery.
Oh, Mount Vernon was amazing, the theater, it was beautiful, and the sounds, the everything, because like every gunshot you heard in the movie was like actually moved the whole theater, it was really good. And there was like this snow part, and it was snowed, and it was like everything came off the ceiling, like, snow actually came from the ceiling, it was really cool.
What about Arlington National Cemetery on the final day? The changing of the guard?
Oh, it was really cool, and I loved how they like did their little performance, it was really cool and quiet.
Sounds cool. Zoe, you have anything? Absolutely, come on up, Zoe. Gentlemen, we'd like to hear from the lady here, come on, Zoe.
What was your favorite part? Can they, I just want to ask you one question, what was your favorite part of the entire trip? You have to come up to the microphone and talk into the microphone. Out of all of the, all of the stuff you did in those three jam-packed days, what was your favorite part of it all?
Probably going to Mount Vernon, because we got to see where Washington actually lived, and it was just like a good experience, so.
Yeah, that's kind of a little bit outside the city, right? That's, it's not right, like where you were doing all the monuments, isn't that kind of a little bit further away?
Yeah.
Okay, cool. What about everybody else? What was your favorite part? You can come up, at least tell us what your favorite part of the whole trip was.
Again, thank you. I would probably say also Mount Vernon, because it was cool to see where George Washington lived, and that he had a really big house, which was really cool to see, and he had like a whole cemetery built there. It was, it was really cool, and it was, yeah, like you said, it was a little farther out from the place, but I was so glad we went there, and it was probably my favorite part of the trip.
Yeah, because I've never been there, because it's just that little bit further out of the city.
Yeah, it's about like a half hour out, but it was, it was such a cool experience. His house is right on the water, it's like an ideal place to live. It was really cool.
Excellent, how about everybody else?
Thomas?
My favorite place that we went to in DC was probably the White House, because that's where like everything happens, where the president lives, it's where.
Isn't it kind of cool, like I found with that, like it's kind of cool to see, you see it on TV all the time, but then to actually be standing there, like, it's like, wow. Was it as impressive in person as it is on TV, or was it better on TV?
Better there.
Yeah.[1046.65][1046.65][laughing]
I do agree with all the other opinions, all of the places were great, but definitely my favorite part was the Holocaust Museum. There was an entire part where it was told from the perspective of a little kid, which was really interesting to see.
Hmm, interesting.
And, you know, all the other parts of it were amazing, too.
Did you get to go to any other museums other than the Holocaust Museum?
Oh, yeah, a few different ones that I can't really remember all the names of at the moment.
That's okay, cool. Excellent, well, thank you.[1078.52][1078.52][applause]
I will say that on the final day, one, a major thing I liked about the final day was Arlington Cemetery and the Holocaust Museum, everyone was respectful, and it was a nice look into the past. After that, we had another grueling 11-hour drive back to Cape Cod. I mean, it was worse traffic than before, but even when we got back, everyone was in a great mood. It was one of the best experiences I've had in my life thus far, and I'll always remember the trip. It was amazing, not only because you got to see all the great museums and memorials and the capital of our country up close, like the major thought was, this is where things happen, this is where you see things on the news, this is where the big changes, this is our generation stepping up to the plate, and we're going to be, we're going to be observing this in the future. But not even that, it was also hanging out with our friends and being there. We were all friends there, all of our friends were together, we got to chill at the hotel, we got to eat snacks, there was a snack bar. We got to have fun, play games, the food arrangements were great, that's one thing I will say as well. And all in all, it was a great trip.
I got to be honest, I'm kind of impressed, because usually when you ask the best part, somebody always says, like, when we went through everybody, somebody always says the food was the best part, and everybody was talking about other things, so that's pretty impressive.
I know if I ever organize a trip, I'm taking you along as the chief spokesperson for the trip, that's for sure. Very impressive, and so glad to hear that you said how proud and impressed you are with the kids, so, and I can tell you would be.
Yeah, highlight of seventh grade by our, thank you for making it happen.
Definitely.
Not a problem.
That's awesome that there's a highlight for seventh grade, I don't recall one in my life, but I'm glad you have one, that's perfect. Did anybody see George Washington's teeth in the museum?
No.
No, we didn't get there yet, thank God.
They were there.
I don't know if we wanted to see that.
You just blocked out.
Wooden teeth, right? Like, yeah, so it's his dentures that are there, and I actually exited the, I went there a couple of years ago with my family, I exited the museum and I ran back in and begged the security guard to let me back in, because I missed the teeth, but, and I didn't want to do that. But I found DC, you know, I've been several times in my life, but at the age 53, it's as inspiring now as it ever was. And, you know, if the lesson you get out of it is that, you know, democracy is worth defending, then that's a win. And you guys were ground zero for one of the most challenging, at the Capitol Building, right? One of the most challenging events that have happened in our lifetimes, honestly, and, you know, you saw the highlights from the, some of the grossest atrocities at the Holocaust Museum, so, all that stuff, you know, learning that stuff and seeing that stuff in real time makes you that much more inclined to be fantastic and inventive and contributory adults. So awesome job, I'm glad you had a great time, never stop traveling.
Thank you, I couldn't agree more with what you just said.
I just want to give one last shout-out to all the community businesses that actually donated and made this possible for our students, as well as the Inacov Grant, which helped pay for two of the tours, the Mount Vernon Tour and one of our ghost tours in the evening. So thank you all again.
Thank you.[1290.71][1290.71][applause]
I would just like to add a thank you to all the staff who took their time, it's, it's a very tough, it's hard.
It's grueling, grueling was the word.
I can't imagine 68 students, and I thank all of the students for representing Barnstable so well. It's, it's great to hear that you enjoyed yourselves and still conducted yourselves the way we like you two in Barnstable, so thank you.
Yeah, Kathy, just to chime in with what everybody else said, it's great to see it firsthand. Having worked with, with Tim through the years, I know this is something that he's been thinking about for, for some time, you know, to kind of bring it to fruition. It's good to see the students, you guys get up here, we have some future orators and contributors in a number of different ways. I'll just say, and I've gotten quite a bit of feedback about the trip, and it's all been resoundingly positive and enthusiastic and encouraging and talking about the impactful nature of this trip, first time that we've done this, but I do know just a couple of things to conclude, that the groundwork for next year's trip has already begun in earnest, you know, so that we can continue to have these type of extracurricular activities, these athletic activities at our intermediate school, something that has been missing in this community for some years, okay? And now it's back in a big way, and so that, you know, and the people that are behind this push, you know, and to continue to see it happen is just very encouraging and positive. And I did, one of the things that I heard from the parents that really stuck out to me was the communication, the consistent communication, and of course, parents were checking in, because everybody has a smartphone, but they were getting that communication from you and from the trip, you know, we're at the White House, we're at Arlington Cemetery, and so the parents, from their perspective, were very much along with you, you know, at each point of the, of the trip, and so it was just organized in a very quality fashion, top to bottom, and already the groundwork for next year is being laid, and so that's tremendous for us in the district.
Anybody else? All right. Item 2.3, National Latin Exam Awards.
Good evening, you guys. Salve te omnes. All right. Let them sneak out, all right? Listen, we can confirm what you said about Owen Jones while they're leaving. Owen Jones is, of course, a student that we taught for many years, and he would be here, I'm sure, getting his National Latin Exam Award, except for, he started Latin as an eighth grader, and so he finished his AP training last year, and he said, he told me that he wanted to take Ancient Greek, but his schedule didn't allow it, he had so many things going on with his, his internship, et cetera, so, go Big Red, all right? Right? Okay. Good evening, you guys. Salve te omnes, as the Romans would have said. Of course, I'm Victoria McCloskey, and I'm here with my Latin colleague, Morgan Gray, and this past March, as always, approximately 100 of our Latin students took the National Latin Exam, a rigorous standardized test of their vocabulary, their grammar, their history, mythology, and culture skills, and of that group, a large number has won some sort of recognition for their performance. Now, I want to give you some context here, again, in our classes, we encourage every single student to take the National Latin Exam and show off what they learned, and this year, all Latin I students were testing and at the, I guess, the, the benefit of the school, yes, the, yep, we subsidize that for our Latin I students, and still, a large number of second-year and third-year and fourth-year students as well took the exam. At the, at an exam school like Boston Latin School or something like that, only the top students in every class are even allowed to take the exam, and so we're very proud that we offer the opportunity to every student, and very, very many, a very high percentage decide to challenge themselves. So, as you can see, a high score here in this test would be very impressive, and there are awards, these are awards that end up on college applications. Last year, Brown specifically asked about your score on the National Latin Exam, and this year, B.C. and Stanford has asked about that as well on their application, so they can put them down on their applications. I'm going to call the names of our highest-performing students and have them come up and receive their award, and if they, we'll have, we'll have picture time, we'll have picture time if they array themselves around the, the curve here, and so please remain standing when I call your name. I'm going to start off with the honorable mentions, these are the cum laude awards, with praise, as the Romans would have said. In Latin I, I'd like to have Julie and Liddell come up, also Erin Henry, and Perry Quinn, or Quinn Perry, I'm sorry, and Max Dollrimple, and Lydia Stich. Come on up, you guys. Come on up, you guys. That's Julie, and then Lydia, there's Lydia, there you go, congratulations, there's Quinn, and there's Erin. There you go. Nicely done. Scooch, scooch it over, there you go, that's right, that's right. We also have a bronze, essentially the equivalent to a bronze medal. In Latin I, Evan Farrell, Sophia Rollo, Molly Britton. In Latin II, Julia Viera, Ray Sharon, Landon Buford, Haley Voravong, and Madison McLaughlin.[1678.71][1678.71][applause] Come on, Landon, I know you're here. There you go, and, there you go, and here, there you go, and that's for Landon. Nicely done, nicely done, lots of people doing other things. I'm sorry, in Latin III, Nathan Gregoire and Christina Timmchen, they are also not here, or at least I didn't see them come in. Woo, all right, all right. Good. Thank goodness, thank goodness. All right, all right, we're getting up there now, we're going to give away the silver medals. In Latin I, congratulations to Elise Panenin, and in Latin II, Simon Richardson and Wyatt Del Negro.[1731.95][1731.95][applause] There you go, there you go as well, and here comes Wyatt, Simon has, oh, excellent job, excellent job. And, yep, we'll give them a big round of applause on that one, too. And then we do have two gold medalists with us this evening. Please, join me in congratulating, congratulating in Latin I, Abigail Adams, and in Latin II, Henry Richardson. Three, Henry's in Latin III. Come on. It's okay. I'm sorry, that's right, Henry's in Latin III. There you go, and Henry.
Just hop on up there.
Hop on up there. All right, you guys, again, I'd love to congratulate these people for their amazing achievement, and welcome you parents with your cameras. Don't be shy. Don't hide, don't hide that nudge. Got a good one? Thumbs up, Stich, we're good. All right. Okay. Stop hiding the medal, Abby. She's just grabbing it, grabbing it like I'm going to take it back or something, right? That's right. You get to keep that. And I'm expecting the same next year. All right, you guys. Nice job. Nicely done. Now, before we sit down, though, I do want to point out that this past weekend at Barnstable High School, for the first time since 2019, Barnstable High School hosted the State Junior Classical League Convention, gathering of students, Latin students and Greek students from all over the state, and 12 total schools. And this is, it's a rebuilding year. 2019, there were a lot of people. There were 30 schools and 500 students. And it's a rebuilding year, no doubt. We had about 200 students, 12 schools. And I just wanted to let you guys know that Barnstable came in second place. We took second place in the state, next time first. But academics, athletics, and Ms. Gray is going to tell you a little bit more, a little bit later, about the convention. All right? Thank you so much again, you guys. Thank you.
Kathy, can I offer a comment? So, I have my master's in Latin and Ancient Greek. I was a classical civilization undergrad, and, you know, then went on to get my master's in California. So, this is, this warms the cockles of my heart, I have to say.
I want to thank you for all your hard work as well. There isn't a student who takes Latin that doesn't come out loving it, and that really, the language is, it really reflects on the instruction that they're getting. So, thank you. Student envoy reports.
Hi. Firstly, I just want to shed light on a fundraiser that's really near and dear to, like, a lot of students' hearts right now. Tomorrow, there is a childhood cancer awareness game for lacrosse, and it's organized by Ally McEnany, and all proceeds are going to Tommy's Place. There's going to be a 50/50 raffle, along with, I think we're selling bracelets. And recently, in the past five, like, four years, there's been two classmates of ours that have been diagnosed with childhood cancer. So, this has affected a lot of our school. So, it's important, like, it's important to us. And the recipients of the money were chosen by those two students who were affected. Yeah. And so, if you guys aren't doing anything tomorrow at 5:45, you guys should come. There's going to be, the raffle has some really good things to give away, like a whole fire pit set, some gift cards. And it's a really good cause. Yes. Yes. Home game, girls lacrosse.
Starting with the boys with baseball, Senior Night, the national anthem is going to be sung live by our own music students. There's going to be a, it's going to be a very different from the recording that's played, and it also gets involved a lot of our community with our music students. So, we think it's awesome.
We're in the thick of exam season right now, so eighth graders are in MCAS. And then, SATs are going on this Saturday, and they're online, so, which is like new, started in March. There's also the SEALA biliteracy that a lot of 12th grade students are going through that can officially put on their, like, applications. And I think it's also on the graduation card that says they're belligerent. And AB tests are the end of next week and then the beginning of the week after. And so, all the, all those are happening right now. It's like, studying for all those is...
This Friday is going to be the fashion show and the art show. The art show starts at 4 o'clock, and the fashion starts at 6:00. In the art show, there's going to be actual physical paintings by our art students from Art I all the way to AP Art, along with ceramics, and some digital art pieces from our digital art classes as well.
Recently, our partnership between our Challenger Program and the town was featured on Channel 5 with our food waste to fertilizer program. It's where the special needs kids specifically work and help out with the changing, like, all of our food waste, putting it in a machine that completely changes into, like, compost. It's a wicked cool program. And...
May 22nd, some of the student ambassadors from the high school are going over to High West to spend about an hour with the High West ambassadors. We're going to be giving them a presentation, along with spending one-on-one time with the ambassadors in order to get to know them and their program, and so they can know about us and our program, and show them that the program doesn't stop once they leave third grade. It continues on. We're going to make friendship bracelets with them, and we're really looking forward to it. Along with that, on Mondays, there has been a Brazilian heritage meeting, and on Tuesdays, a Hispanic community meeting, where students that speak Portuguese are meeting together in order to form a tight-knit community within the school. Same thing with the Hispanic meetings. I've been to a few of the Hispanic meetings, and we, it involves asking questions from different members of the community that speak Spanish, to get to know them better and their perspective, so we get closer and we get pizza.
Recently, I think it was last Saturday, there was a program where the wellness classes, police department, and the people of action all collaborated to teach people how to, well, to run mock traffic stops, and to teach students how to, like, deal with being stopped, because it is a really stressful experience, and how to have the right reaction to... And then, finally, last week, we had our Poetry Out Loud school-wide competition. It was a really good success. All the poets did amazing, and we had a grand slam winner of Eva Lubash. That's it.
Comments? Questions?
Thanks for keeping us up to date. You know, I love all the programs, but especially the people of action, and that traffic stop thing is immensely helpful, I think, because it prepares you for the real world, and, you know, that's coming quick when you're 16 and driving, you know? So, I love that. But I really appreciate all the up-to-date information you guys provide us. It gives us a little window into the school. So, thank you.
Yeah, and especially all the good news you guys provide, too. So, that's great. Yeah, for me, it's good to get those, to get those updates. I was just looking, there's 31 days left in the year. So, it's exam season, and then there's also going to be a lot of activities, you know, for the seniors. Some of the upperclassmen are also going to be participating in those. So, just finish strong. You know, you want to have the good experience, you know? It's a time of transition, particularly for our seniors that are moving forward, but also for the juniors, because you're going to be the big folks on the block very soon as we make, as we, as we kind of shift gears. It's a beautiful day in the neighborhood. Got a baseball game, so people are going to be out and about and moving, doing what they're supposed to be doing. But we got to be locked in to take care of first things first, and you guys seem to be doing that. So, thank you for the comprehensive update, and I look forward to next month, even, you know, but that'll be just like that June, and another school year is fast coming to conclusion. So, good update, and, you know, do your best and shine bright for these last 31 days.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And you already picked your classes for your senior year, so that's when, like, I remember my kids, like, that's when the exciting part, when all of a sudden you're picking your classes for your senior year, and it's like, wow, I'm almost a senior. So, congratulations, like Andre said, finish out the year strong, but congratulations to everybody, and good job, excellent presentation tonight.
Thank you. Have a good night. Item 3.2, Approved School Committee Meeting Minutes, March 20, 2024.
Move to approve school committee meeting minutes for of March 20th, 2024.
I'll second.
Having a motion made and seconded, all in favor.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Item 3.3, Approved School Committee Meeting Minutes, April 3, 2024.
Move to approve school committee meeting minutes of April 3, 2024.
I'll second.
Having a motion made and seconded, all in favor.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Item 3.4, Public Comment. Public comment will be limited to three minutes per individual and 30 minutes total. There will be no debate or action taken on public comment items. The committee will take items under advisement, or the individual will request an item to be placed on a future agenda. The chair will also allow public comment at her discretion during the meeting. Is anyone here for public comment? All right, seeing no one, public comment is now closed. Item 3.5, School Committee Comments and Subcommittee Liaison Reports. Jen, do you have any? Okay. Peter?
I'll sit.
Mike?
Yeah, I got a couple of things, actually. So, we had our Field Facilities Subcommittee on April 25th. It was, actually ran a little bit longer, it was about an hour and 20 minutes. So, we were looking at short-term solutions for our space needs and our K-3 buildings. We kind of, like, kicked around a bunch of different things, and one of the ones we kicked around was taking back over the Osterville Elementary School, which right now is occupied by the Collaborative. And we kind of talked a lot about that, and we also got a timeline on the building of new school. They provided our contractor provided a, kind of a timeline on the way it works in the state, which I found actually really informative. So, with that, our next meeting is May 15th. It's open to the public. It'll be Zoom. And we're going to be having a presentation by a bunch of people, including the superintendent facilities, and a couple of other people, about kind of the viability of taking over the Osterville School, what it would look like, like, just across the district, and just everything about what that would mean, from financials to everything, all kind of, everything. So, it's open to the public. Anybody's more than welcome, and that's the facility. So, that's that. The next thing I'm going to talk about, which most of the members on the school committee are kind of shocked that I haven't talked about it to this point in the school year, is Celebration, which is the after-prom party. That's coming up. The kids, the seniors' prom is May 24th, the Friday of Memorial Day weekend, as it always is. So, for you that aren't familiar, the after-prom party, prom gets done, the kids have, I think it's on around 10:30. Kids have until midnight to get back to the high school. If you've ever been, it's funny, because being involved with it for, like, the last, I don't know, 10 or 12 years, it's amazing how everybody knows about it. They're like, oh, my God, I remember mine, because it's been going on, and this will be the 30th year. So, it takes a village to do this. So, we, they still need volunteers. They still need donations, and the donations, it can be money to buy other things, or it can be donations, and what the donations are, prizes. So, I think every 15 minutes through the entire, from midnight or from midnight till 5:00 or 5:30 in the morning, every 15 minutes is a prize taken. The kids get a ticket, and there's another prize picked, so the kids get to get a prize. So, it's going directly back to our kids. Everybody who's involved in this is all volunteers. So, we, they still need people to volunteer for that night. They need people for the week before to set it all up. Usually, we start on Thursday in the field. We start, like, in the field house, or we start where we can, and then as of that Friday, like, you do the field house, you do some other stuff. And then, as of that Friday, it's kind of chaos, because the school has to be transformed. It's all the way from the field house up to the main cafeteria or the old coffee shop. It's that whole end of the high school has taken over, and it's, I remember the first year I did it, it's absolutely insane what all the volunteers do. It doesn't look like the high school anymore. It's just, it's truly transformed, and it's for safe and sober. It's the kids, keep our kids safe on prom night, because unfortunately, it can happen. So, they're still looking for volunteers, they're looking for donations. They have a meeting tomorrow night. This is probably the most, this is another important fact, is tomorrow night, an email went out to all senior parents tomorrow night at, let me see, at 7:00 PM in the junior/seniary caf, they have a seniors' night. I recommend parents go. It's going to talk about prom, it's going to talk about the celebration. It's going to, if you have ever heard anything about a senior star, where the kids' families decorate with pictures or whatever you want to do, and it's hanging in that area. I mean, kids love going to find them. They're giving those out tomorrow night. The only thing they ask is if you, you don't have to, but if you're able to give a donation or a prize or whatever. And if there's any questions for celebrations, like I said, so we meet people before, we meet people the night of. I know Andre has come a couple of times for the night of. I'm only going to be here for a couple of hours, Mike, and next thing I know, I see him at 4:00 in the morning, and I'm like, Andre, really? And we're both, we don't even talk, we're just like, uh. We kind of grunt at each other as we walk by each other. So, Peter has helped before, too, with the, at the can drive. So, if you need any more information or you have any questions, it's bhselebration@gmail.com is the email, so bhselebration@gmail.com. And they have a Facebook page for you that are on Facebook, they have bhselebration2024. We're getting kind of down to crunch time, and we really could use some help. At this point, we really are kind of behind on volunteers and a little bit behind on the prizes. So, anything that anybody can do to help, please, don't hesitate. Whatever you can do, we appreciate it. It's less that we have to do. So, with that, I will turn it back. Thank you, Kathy.
Mike, can I ask a question?
Yeah, sure.
What's an appropriate prize for someone who's never donated before?
So, to be honest with you, so if you go on, so let me think. So, that's kind of a question. So, if you go on, it's stuff for kids going to college, is mainly what it is. So, like, whether it's something as small as, like, a soap caddy type of thing, you know what I mean, for taking a shower at college, or TV, like, as big as, like, a TV, or anything for a dorm room, to be honest with you. I mean, there are people that have bought refrigerator, like, the small little refrigerators, so sheet sets, like, anything that is...
Extra-long twin.
Extra-long twin. Yeah. So, it's kind of like that, but think of it as a college student. They have a spot on, I'm just going to send a quick text to make sure I get the, get it right. How do you get to the Amazon? Do you have the answer to how to get to the Amazon spot for Celebration?
So, on the, on Amazon, there's a registry for BHS After Prom Celebration 2024. And so, there's, all the gifts are there, and you can...
You don't have to even do, like, you can go there and buy it from Amazon, or it'll just also give you ideas on what, like... But really, to be honest with you, anything for any kid going to freshman year in college when they don't have anything, and the families, like, as anybody whose kids go to college, it's kind of a expense that you didn't really expect, so kind of, that's what it's for, it's for the kids, so. Anything else? Does that kind of help you, Jen?
That's good. I just wanted to know, and I want everybody else to know.
Yeah, because like, what do I, oh...
If they're kids or juniors, like, you know, what do you get? You know?
So, that's it. So, thank you, Kathy, for letting me indulge.
Subcommittee on Policy Revision, our next meeting is Friday, May 10th, at 1:00 PM. I know there are a lot of activities going on. I haven't been able to make them. I tried to go to the jazz concert the other night and torn up Route 28, I forgot about. So, when I pulled in, the musicians were all coming out.
Oh, no.
That was very disappointing. I relax at the concerts. I love the concerts. So, I'm sorry I missed that. Andre, do you have something?
Yes, thank you, Kathy. Before I get into my slides for what happened last month and up to today in the district, I just want to say, as we get towards the end of the year, number of activities that are going on, and a lot of things that are taking place at the high school, specifically in the Astro Park, but amongst them is the Memorial Garden, the presentation or the plaques are put up in Memorial Garden. This was something that was started years ago, under the leadership of Mike and Mary Gira. Martha Swindler is now our Astro Park ambassador, and so, of the events that are going on, that's something that's important in the community. something that's important in the community that will be coming up.
Do you know the date on that?
I do not know.
Okay.
Thanks, Sarah.
Just at some point.
June 6 at 5:00 PM.
Thank you very much, Sarah, for providing that information, so just something to keep in mind, and I'd also like to remember today, Jordan Galvin Jutris, on his birthday. Jordan was a 2015 graduate of Barnstable High School. He was studying fire science at Ava Marie College. Jordan was killed in 2016 in a wrong-way crash going back to school, and Jordan was known in the community, many staff members and just kind of community-wide, and he was one of our best and brightest, so today would have been his 27th birthday, want to remember, Jordan Galvin Jutris. So in terms of last month and up to today, as I say, at Barnstable, we are large, we are diverse, and we are a dynamic district, and many things are taking place. So to begin with, students at Centreville Elementary are making great use of the new benches, beanbag chairs, and forward-facing book bins generously donated by the Cobb Grant Trust. These additions have helped make the library space more comfortable for staff and students alike. Heading over to West Villages, the top two library patrons for each third-grade class began their duties as library ambassadors recently. These students will take turns collecting library books ready to be returned from around the building each morning. Great work for our library ambassadors at West Villages Elementary. We're going to head over to Barnstable, West Barnstable, where students celebrated their differences and honored Autism Awareness Month school-wide with having bubble fun. The Bubble Blowing Campaign was the brainchild of Isabella Moska of Ventnor, New Jersey, the mother of a son with autism. Moska said she was inspired by speech therapist's use of bubbles to engage her students. Each bubble during the campaign is said to symbolize a special wish for a family dealing with autism. We're going to head over to Hyannis West Elementary now, where Earth Day activities took place. Ms. McLaughlin's second-grade class talked about what we can do to protect places, the places where we live. Students created a space of writing and, students created a piece of writing and art to show what they would do to support the earth's beauty. We're going to move over to Barnstable United Elementary School now, a big thank you to Trader Joe's for joining forces with the BUES Library Club. Students were encouraged to embark on the literacy voyage crafted by local wordsmith Lauren Wolk in Beyond the Bright Sea. Expressing, the people at BUES are expressing heartfelt gratitude for the delectable delights and organic lemonade donated by Trader Joe's. Still at Barnstable United Elementary School, fifth-grade authors were eagerly awaiting their published books to be returned from Student Treasures Publishing Company. Ms. Ray, Ms. Bingham, and Ms. McGinnis took Barnstable teacher Kelly King's October 6th Professional Development Painting, Collage, and Writing in ELA course, prompting them to write a Cape Cod Five Art in ELA mini-grant, and an Enoch Cobb Art in Multicultural Classrooms mini-grant was written and received. These supplies received through the grants were used to create students' artwork. Additionally, a special thanks to Ryan Jones, a fourth-generation, a fourth-generation Barnstable firefighter, whose Earth Day Landscaping and Northside Homes companies are sponsoring 42 published books for Ms. Ray and Ms. Batson's team. And I quote, "Barnstable has been so good to me, it's my turn to give back." Thank you to Ryan Jones. We're going to move over to Barnstable High School now, where thanks to a generous donation of the Enoch Cobb Fund Grant, the coastal ecology and advanced marine biology students from BHS were able to attend a field trip in Provincetown at the renowned Center for Coastal Studies. Many students have never had the opportunity to visit Provincetown and experience the beautiful weather while viewing critically endangered North Atlantic right whales feeding off Race Point Beach. Other stops included the Commercial Fishing Pier near Commercial Street and the Marine Debris Art Exhibit at Herring Cove Beach. We're going to stay at Barnstable High School, where the Business, Finance, and Entrepreneurship Pathway hosted its third annual Coffee Connections event on April 11. Students from Mr. Jansen's Management and Business Strategies class and DECA officers led a networking event and presentation that brought in representatives from over 30 businesses on Cape Cod. Students had the opportunity to network professionals in various industries and present their learning in the Business and Finance and Entrepreneurship Pathway. Business leaders also presented various opportunities to get involved with the pathway from serving as academic mentors to hosting internships, thanks to Mr. Jansen. We're going to stay at Barnstable High School for the Annual Music Theater Festival, which took place last month. Students in the Drama Theater class performed musical numbers from Broadway shows. All the choreography, staging, and costumes were designed by student performers. Also at Barnstable High School, speaking of our baseball team, the baseball team won a 1-0 thriller against the Falmouth Clippers, where we, for this 1-0 shutout, had the privilege of a rainbow over the baseball field. I also wanted to say-
Double rainbow.
Yeah, double rainbow. That, community members, we have an Instagram page called bhselebrations24. We're getting close to the end of the school year, and so you can go on that page and see where many of our graduating seniors are making their next destination, moving on to. BHS destinations, this is just three, and I want to make clear that there are numerous dozens of our graduating seniors that are moving forward to the next phase of their lives, so you can check that out at bhselebrations. This was brought up, but in conclusion, it's Fashion Week at Barnstable High School, Monday through Friday, so we're on the third day of Fashion Week, not specifically sure what today's fashion, I think it might be blackout.
Blackout.
Yeah, blackout day, and we have two more days of Fashion Week going on, and this will of course culminate, you've heard it before, I don't mind mentioning it again, the fashion show will be tomorrow at Barnstable High School, starting at 6:00, and there's an art show, I believe, before that, so anybody who's able, go ahead and check out the fashions, the designs, the styles by our Barnstable High School students.
Any, anybody else? Okay, superintendent's report, item 3.6.
Great, thank you. I want to recognize three students from Kathy Duran's Grade 2 class at Hyannis West were chosen as Peace Poetry winners for the Cape and Islands. All of the poems resound with the theme of finding peace. I've read all three, and they are very moving pieces. The students will recite their peace poems on Saturday, May 18 at 10:00 AM at the Congregational Church in Centreville. Our community will hear firsthand stories of children fleeing violence and migrating to Cape Cod in search of peace. I want to add that in addition to the Challenger Club being highlighted on Channel 5, Angelique Gardner, Noah Norman, Lauren Calaruso, Liam Beauregard, Clayton Barker, and Andrew Todoroff were also recognized with the president's volunteer service in Silver Medal for their work as part of the Challenger Club within the past week or so, so congratulations to them. Want to make the school committee and community aware of some next steps related to the budgets that the school committee has passed this year. In terms of the capital budget, Kevin Maxim, interim director of facilities, Chris Dwelly and I will be presenting the school committee's capital project, project list, at tomorrow evening's town council meeting. Our 15 projects prioritize safety and accessibility and necessary mechanical repairs with a value of $9.9 million. And we presented, Chris Dwelly and I presented the FY25 operating budget to the Comprehensive Financial Advisory Committee on Monday, April 22. We appreciate their attention to the budget and excellent questions. I spent four days out of the district right before April vacation, and so I wanted to provide the school committee with a report, and the community, if you emailed me, you would have had an out-of-office message, but I had one of the best professional learning experiences I've had in a very long time. I called it a field trip because we were accompanied by four students, but it really was a joint learning experience for a group of 12 of us. Four students, two administrators, five teachers, and a parent from Barnstable High School, and Morgan Gray was one of the teachers that attended. And I'm not going to do it justice, because you'd really have to listen to all 12 people share how we came together and learned together, and we were just one of several groups that are going on some visiting tours to see model high schools around the country, really, and around the region, to see what we can learn and bring back to Barnstable through the grant-funded project. This was supported by both the Barr Foundation and NGLC, Next Generation Learning, something or other. We were joined by about 100 other students, educators, and parents from participating districts, and we visited three schools in Vermont. We also visited the Ben &amp; Jerry's Ice Cream Factory. In Vermont, their state focus has been on competency-based learning and flexible pathways, and so we heard a lot about that at three different school districts. All were really quite small districts, and so our challenge was to try to wrap our minds around how they were implementing their transformative work in small settings and how that would scale up to Barnstable. One district in and of itself had very similar demographics, so that was something that we found really compelling, and because of seeing the small schools and our large school, I think it sort of emphasized ways in which we can create more community by making a large school feel smaller, and building relationships and building connections, and that was really a theme that we had over, over our four days together. One of the takeaways, I have a couple takeaways here, one was that these districts were really on decade-long journeys, they've been working towards this for 10 years, and so sustainable change really takes a long time, but we, we were witnesses to it. Our team developed a capstone presentation to highlight opportunities that we can envision in Barnstable High School, to take advantage of strengths from the past, current strengths that we have going on now, as well as opportunities for the future. Personal highlights for me included visiting the Menusky High School and their school-based health clinic, where the nurse partnered with some primary care physicians in the community to do school-based medicine, above and beyond what you would typically see by a school nurse. I also went to Harwood Union High School's Alternative Learning Program and saw how they structured their alternative learning program, and have some, some takeaways there that I think are quite relevant. The flexible learning pathways at all three schools really reminded me of the strength of our pathways and the opportunities that we provide in multiple ways, and we've been talking a lot about ways in which we need to make sure and ensure that each student finds their path and their road to success. Next steps, all the participants in these various school visits and the visioning team that's been working all year are going to come together and participate on May 24 in a half-day of professional development to synthesize across all of the groups. We will then be putting together a compilation to share with Barnstable High School faculty and staff at the June staff meeting, providing a foundation for the school, foundation for the next high school principal, with a roadmap, and also a group of very caring educators and students and administrators to support continuous improvement and future learning at BHS. So it was super, super exciting, and I was glad April vacation came, we got back late on Friday and rolled into a few days off. And then lastly, tonight, I just have a couple of updates related to our two principal searches. We have vacancies at the high school and at our Early Learning Center. The high school principal's search is being co-chaired by Human Resources Director Bill Cole and Assistant Superintendent Kristen Harmon. There was a group of, I think, about 15 stakeholders, administrators, teachers, community members, and students, who served as part of an interview team. They interviewed semifinalists, after a paper screening, they selected semifinalists to interview last week in order to advance three selected finalists for site visits, which are currently being planned for next week and the week after. So we anticipate that announcements and invitations will be sent out to the community on Friday at the end of this week to announce the finalists and invite stakeholders to some forums where they can meet the candidates. The Early Learning Center principal's search is tracking about one week behind the high school principal's search and is being chaired by Assistant Human Resources Director Tammy Cunningham. This search committee is also comprised of representative stakeholders, they've screened applications, and they are interviewing candidates this week, and I anticipate they will select a small number of finalists for site-based visits a couple weeks from now. During site visits, I will be meeting individually with all candidates for a one-to-one interview, as well as attending some of the forums as my schedule allows, like to see the interaction with students and with families and with staff. We do have a process by which we will collect input and feedback as a result of the site visits, which has been done in the past. References are checked prior to making a final decision, and one thing we've discussed, which we may choose to do, sort of depends on whether or not we feel we need additional information, which would be to visit the candidates at their schools or workplaces. We haven't committed to that, but it's another step in the process that could be a tool in terms of finding the excellent candidate to fill the spot. So that is the update for you there, and happy to take any questions or comments.
Questions?
I just wanted to thank you for participating in that field trip. I think that, you know, when a superintendent says we're looking at a 10-year vision, it demonstrates commitment to the future and real vision, and in my time on the council, I don't recall hearing that with such commitment. As you know, I've said many times publicly, there's a lot of room for improvement in the high school, there's a lot of things that we're doing right, but there's a lot of room for improvement, and that gives me a lot of hope that we're, we're looking in the right direction to, to plan for the coming decades. And I think we, we've committed to doing that in everything we do up here. I mean, when we talk about not only curriculum but other things, we're always talking about, what about 10 years from now? So I just wanted to make that public, and I, I think it's a really good exercise to see what the winners are doing. Thank you.
Peter? Andre? Mike? Okay, thank you. Item 3.7, Assistant Superintendent Report.
Thank you. So you might be noticing that the superintendent and I are wearing a little bling today, so I would like to thank the BWB Grade 2 students for sending these our way. This is their new community service project that is currently underway. If you recall, last year, they made sculpey necklaces and donated their proceeds to the Cape and Islands Veterans Outreach Center. This year, they're making pins, and all proceeds are going to Sandy Paw's Rescue Incorporated, a local dog rescue nonprofit. There is an imprint of a paw on these, so very appropriate, very proudly wearing this today, and kudos to Mrs. Napton, Mrs. Corbett, Mrs. Pandolfi, and Mrs. Campbell's classes at BWB for their civic engagement, and really appreciate their creativity as they're looking to support community organizations. I want to recognize a few Barnstable High School students that sang the National Anthem at the Providence Bruins game on Sunday, April 21. So we had six BHS students, Aberley Norton, Grade 9, Catherine Wing, Grade 9, Trinise Clegg, Grade 11, Martina Ibarra Suarez, Grade 11, Sophia Lewis, Grade 11, and Keely Tuie, Grade 11. They were invited to participate in the singing of the National Anthem at the Providence Bruins game against the Hartford Wolf Pack. It was a Bruins fan appreciation game, so they were singing in front of a packed house. While I wasn't there in person, I did watch their, their performance on video, and I am just amazed by their presence and the singing, and it didn't look like they were nervous at all to be singing in front of this audience, and so I just, it's, it's great, and the, our students were sharing that we'll have students singing the National Anthem at our upcoming baseball game, and I just think it's such a really nice way to showcase our students. Which brings me to the Barnstable Jazz Night, I'm sorry you missed it. It was, I was so happy to have the opportunity to go, it was just everything lined up. So on Monday, April 29, I did, I was able to attend Jazz Night at Barnstable High School, but it was more than Jazz Night, it was an awards night, an induction into Triem, and an evening of vocal and instrumental jazz. Students were- Students were recognized for their talents and commitment, so they combined it with some senior recognitions, awards for their commitment and leadership in the music program. Five students were newly inducted into TRIAM, and that's the Music National Honor Society. Students are recognized for both their musical and academic talents. Outside of the awards, there were great performances, starting with the BHS Vocal Jazz, and then ending with the BHS Jazz Band. I would say that two highlights of the night for me included the Jazz Band performance, which started with the BIS Jazz Band, the intermediate school. They performed first, and then the high school Jazz Band came onstage and joined them for two selections. And according to the presenter, they said that the group had only worked on the pieces for four days, and they came together. It really was amazing. And then, the BIS group left, and the high school group finished. And again, the talents are amazing. And the other highlight, you know, as they were reintroducing members of TRIAM, so I guess each year you're annually kind of re-inducted, they recognize a staff member, and so they recognized John Walsh, who is the high school head custodian. And he was presented with an honorary induction to TRIAM for all of the support that he does for the music program. And it just was such a wonderful evening from start to finish, and it's just another reminder of how talented our students are and what we have, our students are doing. It's great. And then, finally, I had shared with the committee via email, I believe it was on Monday, the district selection of the next K-5 literacy programs. I'd like to just share some information publicly. As I know you are all aware, through my updates, we've been engaging in a comprehensive process to identify and select our next K-5 literacy program. So, during the April 3rd in-service day, the GLEAM team and the GLEAM pilot teachers, again, GLEAM, Growing Literacy Equity Across Massachusetts, all met to come to, for a consensus meeting, to come to agreement around the selection of our next, for recommendation of our next K-5 literacy program. So, the group, over the period of two and a half hours, reviewed all of the data, all of the feedback collected from parents, students, pilot teachers, non-pilot teachers, the data from the nine-week pilot surveys and forums. We had presentations to non-piloting staff to make sure that they had opportunities to experience both of the pilot programs. We had virtual site visits to schools that were using both programs, professional development and drop-in opportunities. All of this was presented to the group, discussed, processed, and then, using a Google form, asked the group of 43, in total, 43 staff members, GLEAM team and pilot teachers, to submit their recommendation. And we had an overwhelming majority of the group, 92% of the group, identified Amplify CKLA as the literacy program for the district to move forward with. So, that was their recommendation to the superintendent, shared with Dr. Hearn. And we also, as part of the GLEAM grant, had to share this recommendation with the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education for final review and approval. And now, we're working with the vendor on, and we have received the final quote, so we are ready to move forward with this. And because the funding will be coming from some grants, we will be moving forward with a five-year agreement. And so, that will provide us with access to online materials and consumables for the five years. And we're really excited for our K-5 students and staff to move forward. So, we still have a lot of work in terms of an implementation plan, professional development, and the materials will be starting to arrive. And next year's going to be really exciting for all. So, thank you.
Questions? Comments? Mike?
First of all, I would like to thank you, Kristen. I know I've asked you a lot of hard questions over the last year on this GLEAM grant. Thank you so much for everything that you've done for this. Your leadership has, obviously, and I'd be honest with you, as I said a couple of months ago, there was a lot of concern from the staff level because of the predecessors and the way things were done in the past. And I honestly have heard nothing but you've restored faith from our, honestly, that's a huge thing, is if people buy in, that's a huge thing to get things to be successful. Doesn't matter how much we all think it's going to be successful, it has to happen on the ground. And the buy-in you got with this process is immeasurable, not just for this, but for other projects, whatever. So, you've restored the faith. So, thank you very much for doing that. It wasn't easy. Also, thank you to all the teachers and staff that were involved in it. I know it was a lot of documentation. I've talked to some of them. I know the amount of documentation they had to do, and like, off-hours and just all of the research and just, so it literally, people stepped up to the plate to get a, what I've heard is going to be an awesome reading program for our kids. So, that's what it all comes down to. So, thank you to everybody, but like I said, thank you for restoring the faith in the leadership of Barnstable.
I echo that, agree with Mike, that it's important that our teachers have as much control as you've given them to select the curriculum materials that they need. And I do thank you as well. Kristen, I have a question about the music. Our numbers were dipping for a while, especially given COVID, and are they coming back up? Are those younger grades getting involved? I think allowing the BIS students to join is a huge mentoring and lets them feel maybe a little more confident about continuing their music at the high school.
So, I don't have hard, fast numbers, but I would agree. Like, not only did I see the students connecting together and that idea of mentorship, but also what struck me was the staff. It was, it was, they were just, okay, this is silly, they were in concert, like, they literally were in concert together, sorry. But, but they just, the way in which they worked together, so it's very clear to me that they are striving for that very same goal. I can certainly get some enrollment numbers, but if we're not seeing the gains yet, there is no doubt in my mind that we will, though, just because the way in which the two groups operated together. It was, it was really wonderful.
You know, as an educator, music is so important for the development of the brain. And then, of course, it strengthens the area that is conducive to math. And so, I've always, I appreciate the music. I have very little musical talent, if any, but I do appreciate it. And my children, I see how much they appreciate it. Only, only two of them really participated in the music program actively, but one always was interested in music and went to the concerts even without his siblings performing. So, I think it's very important for the well-roundedness, and I think it's also a great outlet for our students. So, you don't need to waste time getting numbers. I just was curious because I know, I know how hard they're working to revitalize it. And so, I appreciate that leadership as well.
Thanks.
All right. Were you all set? You were hitting the mic.
I did just want to say thank you for your kind comments, but I also would be remiss in, it was truly a team effort, the work. And, you know, Kerry Morris really took such a strong lead in this, and I just really think it's important that no one person can do this curriculum review alone. And so, in terms of leadership, and of course, the teachers and their work, but truly a team effort. So, thank you.
All right. We're old business. Item 4.1, approved field trip request to Italy, February 2025.
Hello again. So, I'm Morgan Gray, here with Victoria McCloskey. And we're asking for your permission to take students to Italy again. We're looking at February of 2025. We last went in April last year, 2023, there it is. And this would be my third trip here at Barnstable High School in six years. We went in February 2020, just got that under the gun, and then April 23rd, so this would be our third one. Yeah. Yeah, just under the gun. It worked out. It'll be my fifth trip abroad with students, and Victoria's, I don't know, a lot, right? So, this is something that we've done on numerous occasions. It's a very similar itinerary to what we did last time. We're going to go to the, we'll start again in Naples. We'll go, we're going to go to the Archaeological Museum this time, give them a chance to look around at some sculptures and see the art there. We'll go climb Mount Vesuvius, we'll wander around Pompeii. This year in Latin III, and next year in Latin III, we'll actually, we're reading the letter about the eruption of Pompeii, or the eruption of Vesuvius that ends up burying Pompeii. So, we're working harder to directly tie, you know, the curriculum to things they will see while they're there. Then, we'll go to Rome, we'll do all the big stuff, the Colosseum, the Forum, the Trevi Fountain, you know, the Spanish Steps, the Pantheon. We did just recently learn that apparently next year is going to be a Jubilee year, which is a big deal for the Catholic Church. But looking at what they've got scheduled thus far, I don't, we're not seeing, like, there will likely be an uptick in other visitors, pilgrimages, but I don't think it's going to be a horrible nightmare. It seems like the summer would be a real bad time to go. So, we're like, February sounds good. And so, we'll spend several days in Rome, getting to see, you know, so many of the things that we've talked about in our classes, the Colosseum especially is always a favorite. And then, we'll end up with a day trip to Florence, right? We'll spend a day in Florence once again, see the David, and just get a chance to walk around Florence and experience that. This weekend, as Victoria mentioned, we hosted Junior Classical League Convention, and some of the students who were on the Italy trip were talking about what a good time they had on that trip, how impactful it was, what a great time. They were reminiscing fondly, and I have had one of the parents tell me that their children, their child who's off to college next year specifically selected a school with a study abroad program in Italy. That was one of the things they were looking for in their college of choice. So, this is a trip that has ongoing impact after, you know, even if they don't take Latin the following year, you know, not all of them, not all of them get to stay in Latin. It's okay, you know, it's, I mean, it's tragic, but it is something that definitely has an impact and that affects them. And they greet each other still in the hallway, even if they don't have myself or Victoria this year, they come by and say hi and give us updates. And so, it's a wonderful opportunity for our students to really, as the BIS students were saying, you know, these things that we read about, then you get to go and look at it, and it's a very different experience. And so, it's been successful in the past. We would, again, cap it at 20 students, and we would, we're planning on being the two chaperones. Sorry, everybody always volunteers to come. Look, we'd love to take you all, but alas, we can't. So, we would, we would go.
I'm going to vote no then.
I mean, I.
Let's talk here, wait a minute.
Look, one of these days, we're going to run the adult version, because there's so many requests. Clearly, that's what we need. But for now, we're still looking at providing this opportunity for students. So, if there's any questions, we can answer for you. Any other, anything, did I skip anything? Oh, we need a lot of gelato. Right, the obviously important, because you know, the first thing they all say when they, like, how was your trip? We ate so much gelato. And it's like, okay, do you want to talk about the, nah, the gelato, okay, thanks. They do eventually remark on, you know, the monuments and stuff, but the gelato is always inevitably a highlight. So, I knew I was forgetting something important, the gelato. Is there any, any questions?
Yeah, well, I'd like to say that if you guys want to go to Italy, it's open, and you can go on your own. I've done it several times. But yay, you guys are making me geek out up here. I totally dig it. I remember reading that, it was Pliny the Younger, I believe, right? And I remember what he said, that, you know, I said to my uncle, grab your sandals, or, you know, his uncle had said that to him, maybe it was, right? And they talked about how when the eruption happened, how the sea was like literally sucked into itself, and they could see all the sea creatures abandoned, like, on, just like laying there, waiting for the tide to come back in to cover them. It's a riveting account.
It is.
It's really exciting to read that stuff. You know, I was there, I think, two years ago now for Christmas, my family and I went and did a little European tour at Christmas time. And I was shocked to see that in the time I hadn't been there, they moved a lot of the mosaics from Pompeii to the Naples Archaeological Museum. So, we did, we did miss out on that. But please don't miss the Column of Trajan.
Oh, no, we never do.
One of my favorite spots.
Also a popular choice.
Yeah, so that's really exciting. And of course, the gelato. Yeah, you guys are awesome. I'm going to come in and sit in your class.
Please do, anytime, anytime.
Mike?
No, I just say, it just sounds fantastic. One of these days, I will chaperone, maybe, possibly.
I'll chaperone you, you chaperone me, we're good to go.
Yeah, for me, great job. You know, thanks for, you know, going above and beyond. I'm just interested, we just saw a number of standout Latin students, and, you know, I'm seeing, kind of envisioning like a symmetry here, these standout students, you know, are they some of the participants that, on these field trips? You know, and so, they're, you know, you're just continuing to create, you know, these incentives for them, you know, to strive, to achieve, to excel. And, you know, so it's great for yourself, but I'm just saying to myself, man, like this, you have a model in place, like, you've, you know, as I've been on the school committee, we've seen each other for these trips, and you're going on the trips. And so, thank you, A, you know, but then, you know, we, just to grow this, you know, and possibly to help other educators, you know, I know there are a number of people go a number of different places, but that thanks to you is, you know, you're an awesome example for your peers and the district, you know, in terms of, you know, these students are excelling off the charts because you're creating further steps for them. You know, it's not just get these grades because, you know, you're going to leave, you know, not just these esoteric things, like, you're creating concrete things, and it's just, it's reciprocal, you know? And that's why your program is a powerhouse, because you have all these different, no, but on a serious note, you know, that's why we're having this conversation about these students going to these Ivy League institutions, and it's the norm. There's students going to, that's students going to, you know? And I know, you know, people don't like to talk about themselves, and you receive so much, but just great job. And then, I'm saying to myself, like, this, you know, we have, you know, some challenges in the district, so on and forth, but we also have some examples and some models, you know, for how students can get it done, you know, with consistency, you know, over time. So, thanks.
Thank you.
So, I got to kind of know you both a little bit when we were trying to do the Italy trip in 2022. It was the first one international after COVID. So, I get to kind of get to know you a little bit during that, that whole workaround, we'll call it, to be nice. So, I'm going to be kind of the killjoy, I assume, but got to ask the questions because of the seats we sit in. I assume we're using like the same vendor we always use. It has the insurance.
Yes.
It has all the liability stuff, Jane, has it gone through Dave Anthony and all of that? And it's all, I just, I feel like I have to ask it.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
I assume that you've done this so many times that it is, but you're still going to ask it. Other than that, have a fantastic time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Great.
Motion?
Is it cool? Can we go? Can I go tell the kids tomorrow? They're all like, are we going to Italy? And I was like, I'm working on it, I'm working on it.
I'll move to approve the field trip request to Italy in February 2025 as presented in tonight's materials.
Second.
Having a motion made and seconded, all in favor.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you very much. One other thing, since you're all such big fans of the music department, just so you know, the spring concert for the high school music, I don't know all of them, I'm so sorry, but I know the high school band choir orchestra, including the modern orchestra, and I think the contemporary band is May 21st, Tuesday, May 21st, and I want to say it's a seven o'clock start, so, because since you're all curious about the music program.
Get the leave at 5:00 to get past Route 28.
Right, yeah, 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 so leave early, but thank you all so much, we appreciate it.
Thank you, have a good night.
All right. Item 4.2, approve JROTC job description for maritime science instructor.
Thank you. So, in your packet is a job description for a maritime science instructor. This came to us via the U.S. Coast Guard. We've been in talks with them regarding job descriptions and expectations for the instructors. So, you'll see that we took the job description and put it into our typical template. They do have an expectation that the employee will be an 11th-month employee, and the minimum salary amount is listed at the bottom, although the district could choose to increase that depending upon what applicants we get. We are kind of still working out with the union whether this would be an affiliated or unaffiliated position. Either way, we'll need to work out an MOA to just sort of denote that there's, that that relationship exists. But Brooke, these have been shared with Brooke and shared with the MTA for that conversation. So, we're asking for your approval so that we can get these posted. We do have some interested candidates, but would like to move to get folks interviewed and hired.
Questions?
I just have one, how's the whole process working? Just because this is the JROTC, how's the kind of, I know we kind of approved it, and we kind, like, how's the whole, how's it going?
It's been great.
How's it going?
It's been great so far in terms of building a relationship. I think I had made a comment that they came on site, they brought a number of people from area locations, not just the folks from Maryland, but also connecting us with people in the region. What will take it to the next level, we'll be hiring at least one instructor. I think based on our numbers right now, I think we're looking at hiring one instead of two. And then that person can kind of come in and shepherd the program going forward, but still some excitement for sure.
Move to approve JROTC job description for maritime science instructor as presented in tonight's material.
I'll second.
Having a motion made and seconded, all in favor.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Item 4.3, approve JROTC job description for senior maritime science instructor.
Thank you. So this job description is for the senior maritime science instructor. This is a department head level position, so it would be a part-time teacher, part-time kind of administrator of the program, would supervise the maritime science instructor and I think would be the first person we would hire in order to kind of build the program. Also an 11th month position, does have a slightly higher salary and higher degree expectation. And, you know, so similarly looking to onboard this person to get the program up and going.
Move to approve JROTC job description for senior maritime science instructor as presented in tonight's materials.
I'll second.
Having a motion made and seconded, all in favor.
Aye.
And motion carries unanimously. Item 4.4, approve revised job description for the early education and care coordinator position. Sarah?
I will turn this over to Kristin in just a moment, but we are looking to revise a job description for the early education and care coordinator position. This is in part due to the recent grant that we received with the early childhood public-private partnership as a gateway city with the governor's office. And so I think Kristin worked very closely with, with some folks in the office to put together a really, I think a really powerful solution in order to kind of take advantage of a current position we have, but then also look forward to some potentials to expanding that, those preschool services. Can I turn it over to Kristin?
Sure, yes.
So the job description you have was formerly the before and after care coordinator position. And so that is an EEC, Early Education and Care Program. And so the preschool partnership initiative is also under EEC and has requirements through EEC. So it seemed to be a good place to kind of join the positions. As part of the grant requirements, we need to have a .5 coordinator of the preschool program partnership initiative. And so .5 of this position would be connected with that, with the other portion, the before and after care oversight. So the job description blends the two, so that really new factors are related to the partnership program. The position itself is funded partially by the grant and then the other portion is funded through the before and after care tuitions, as it would have been previously anyway.
Is it part of one of the unions?
No, it's a non-affiliated position.
Okay. All right, any other questions?
Move to approve the revised job description for the early education and care coordinator position as presented in tonight's material.
I'll second.
Having a motion made and seconded, all in favor.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. All right, item 4.6, approve members, or.
4.5.
4.5, create a school committee, a school committee goals subcommittee. So back in 2022, 23, we had school committee goals that were drafted and I can, they're posted with, the goals are posted on the school committee webpage under suspended committees. And the report after, at, at the end of that year was also posted. So at that time, we had the goals of increasing school committee participation and improve community engagement in the budget development. And that, that did occur. And then we also had strengthened the partnership between school committee and school councils. And then the third goal was to strengthen school committee communications with opportunities with the, between the community and our, the school department. I'm, I'm going off the top of my head. So, and those were achieved and a report was written. So we didn't do anything with setting new goals. We had a lot of business that was occurring and so I wanted to bring this back and these are goals for us. And part of the process would be to form the subcommittee with two members of the five of us. And then you would make some recommendations back to the whole committee and we would have something to focus on. There are goals that are out there by other school committees that I've taken a look at over the past couple of months. I think the timeline for this would be that we would try to put some goals together for our next fiscal year, which would begin July 1. Any questions or volunteers?
I would volunteer for that. I'm very interested in that.
Anybody else interested?
So the goal subcommittee, just, it would be objectives for.
Us.
Us to.
For recommendations.
Recommendations.
So to just be bringing recommendations. The last time we did this, we did it as a committee because I don't think they'd been done in quite a long time, we'll say. So it was kind of one of those things, it was like, where do we start? Like, so we kind of did it as a sub, as a whole school committee. And hindsight, I think it would have been better off if, because everybody's, there's five cooks in the kitchen. So I think it would have been better off if it was a subcommittee. So that's kind of why it's like, that, that was one of my mistakes is I kind of had made it all of us and it just, it took forever because it was just five cooks in the kitchen. So that's kind of.
So you would bring, you know, have, have discussions. The subcommittee would include the superintendent and then two school committee members to frame some suggestions to bring back and then just a couple of areas for us to focus on so that we are continuously improving as a school committee. That's the purpose of it.
I think it's very apropos, you know? It's a, it's a good time to do it when the budget is passed and we're slowing down for summertime, we can really focus on it and.
And that's when we did it. We did it kind of like starting this time of year and kind of did it through the summer because it was kind of like that off season.
Yeah, Jen, I agree with you, excuse me, about sitting down and looking at some goals for the district. So I'd be in favor of a goal subcommittee role.
So Jen, I heard you're interested in volunteering. Is there anybody else who's interested?
Yes, I think there's goals to consider for the district, so I'd volunteer myself.
Okay. Andre.
Do you want to make a motion? Or actually, we have to move to create the.
Move to create the school committee goals subcommittee.
Okay, so I'm going to move to create a school committee goals subcommittee. Can I get a?
All right, having a motion made and seconded, all in favor.
Aye.
And motion carries unanimously. And then item 4.6, approve the membership. I heard Jen volunteer, I heard Andre volunteer, so if somebody would like to make a motion.
I was pondering it, but now that you have two.
Well, the early bird gets the worm, big guy.
Yeah, I, yeah. I was just pondering and Andre.
Andre is the early bird.
But that's good, good.
Okay.
You can.
Approve.
I'll keep you posted, Peter, on the goals. So, yes.
Move approve school committee, move to approve school committee members Jen Cullum and Andre King and Superintendent Sarah Hearn as members of the school committee goals subcommittee.
I'll second.
All right, having a motion made and seconded, all in favor.
Aye.
And motion carries unanimously.
Point of information, when, if we can hammer out when we're going to meet, the sooner the better, that would be great.
Yeah.
I don't know, I don't know why my schedule has become so busy over the last like month, but it's insane right now. So I'm happy to move things around. I just, that's a priority for me to do this, so, just so we, if we can communicate.
And then, how do you want to handle the chair? Do you want?
Kathy, you need to do a vote and you.
For the chair.
Slapped the chair.
Right, so is there a recommendation for the chair?
Well, Jen was first, so I'll recommend Jen.
That's nice, Peter. We're really getting along lately.
While I was pondering.
You need a second.
Oh, can I get a?
I'll second that.
All right, so having a motion made and seconded.
Move to name Jen Cullum as the chair of the school committee's goals subcommittee.
I'll second.
Perfect. All right, having a motion made and seconded, all in favor.
Aye.
And motion carries unanimously. Thank you for stepping up both Andre and Jen. Item 4.7, revise policy IMG and name change, service animals in school to animals in school. This is a first read. The MAS C recommendation was to have two separate policies as we continue to do a review. Therefore, we removed the language that are related to service animals, renamed this policy, animals in school. And the revision is posted on the website, or not on the website, in the board docs. Item 4.8 is related to this, to create policy IMG A, service animals in school. It's the second half of our combined policy. There were a few language changes related specifically to the service and animals that were made for clarity. Item 4.9 is also a first read, policy IJL and name change. Again, this is part of our regular review. The current library collection policy would be renamed library material selection and adoption. The policy was renamed to better reflect the content. There was some language removed that was duplicated in other policies that we had just passed as a school committee. Anybody who has feedback should give it to either Sarah, Peter or me and staff can work through the superintendent. Any questions? All right, item 5.0, conduct financing on facilities. Number 5.1, fiscal year 24, BHS chiller replacement. Who's coming?
Kevin.
Kevin's here with us tonight, but I can get this sort of queued up. The next several items are related to our FY24 capital projects that have been out to bid. Some of those bids have come back and we're looking for approval to engage in some contracting. This first one is a little bit more complicated in that the original appropriation does not cover where the bid came out to be. And so the motion does involve a request to the town council to transfer an amount of $160,530 from a different capital program item to this one in order to support it. And I'll turn it over to Kevin to talk or answer your questions about the BHS chiller.
Hello? There we go. Better. Yep, the, the BHS chiller came in, the bid, the lowest bid came at 360 overall. We had 250 appropriated for it. We have BHS, BIS RTU funds. It is a rooftop chiller. So we're hoping to appropriate some of those funds over to that line item to make up the difference.
Any questions, comments? All right.
Approve a transfer request from the Barnstable Town Council in the amount of $160,530 from BPS Capital Projects 2221, BHS and BIS rooftop replacement program to BPS Capital Projects 23116, night hall chiller replacement. And upon, upon affirmative vote of the Barnstable Town Council, authorize Superintendent Sarah Hearn to execute the bid award acceptance and subsequent contracts as presented in tonight's materials.
I'll second.
Having a motion made and seconded, all in favor.
Aye.
And motion carries unanimously. All right. Item 5.2, on-call school plumbing.
So this is the second attempt at getting some on-call plumbing providers for the school district. We had, initially, we were looking for three on-call plumbers potentially. We had one submission. Townsend Plumbing was the lowest qualified bidder, so I recommend them. Approval for that contract.
All right, questions? All right, Mike?
Move to approve the, move to approve the award of FY24 on-call school plumbing to Townsend Plumbing and Heating LLC, not to exceed $20,000 in year one in a maximum three-year contract totaling $220,000 and to authorize Superintendent Sarah Hearn and Chair Kathy Bent to execute the bid awarded acceptance and subsequent contracts as presented in tonight's material.
I'll second.
Having a motion made and seconded, all in favor.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Item 5.3, fiscal year 24, Barnstable Public School EIFS panel replacement.
Yep, the Astro Park EFIS panel replacement project is currently out to bid. It's coming. The bids close May, May 10th. We're seeking just to kind of expedite the approval of the lowest qualified bidder for that project.
Just one question, are we replacing this with the EFIS same type of material?
No, this is a.
That's good.
Yeah, exactly. No, it's a type of phenolic paneling, similar to, similar to what's on the cafeteria exterior.
Okay.
So similar to that. It, it looks, it looks nice.
Okay.
You guys, you'll be happy with it.
All right, Mike?
Move to approve the pre-bid approval award to the lowest responsive bid and responsible bidder in the amount not to exceed the amount that has been approved and appropriated for the project and to authorize Superintendent Sarah Hearn or Chair Kathy Bent to execute the bid award acceptance and subsequent contract for the FY24 Barnstable School EIFS panel replacement project.
I'll second.
Having a motion made and seconded, all in favor.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Item 5.4, fiscal year 24, BCIS window replacement project.
Yep, the BCIS window replacement project also closes on May 10th. We're looking to get pre-approval for the lowest qualified bidder for that project as well.
Questions?
Move to approve the pre-bid approval award to the lowest responsive bid and responsible bidder in the amount not to exceed the amount that has been approved and appropriated for this project and to authorize Superintendent Sarah Hearn or Chair Kathy Bent to execute the bid award acceptance and subsequent contract for FY24 BCIS window replacement project.
I'll second.
Having a motion made and seconded, all in favor.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Item 5.5, fiscal year 24, Barnstable District K to 5 door replacement project.
Yep, this, this project also closes on May 10th and we're seeking pre-approval for that project for the lowest qualified bidder.
Can I just ask a question? So it says K through 5, is this all the buildings or what buildings are the doors being replaced? I assume it's outside exterior doors or is it inside in what buildings?
Sure, it's, it's exterior doors.
Okay.
It's a base bit of BCIS, West Villages, BUE and Centerville.
Okay. Thank you.
And then we have alternates if, you know, our funding comes in the other.
With a little extra money, you have like other ones that could be done or, right?
Precisely.
It's kind of a moving target. Okay, thank you.
And this is for updating security? Is that why we're doing it? Yeah?
Both, so you have, part of the project is to do the vestibule.
Yep.
Vestibules in your school. And then you just have a lot of old doors as well that are, just need to be replaced.
Great, thank you.
Move to approve the pre-bid. Move to approve the pre-bid approval award to the lowest responsive bid and responsible bidder in the amount not to exceed the amount that has been approved and appropriated for this project, and to authorize Superintendent Sarah Hearn or Chair Kathy Bent to execute the bid award acceptance and subsequent contracts for FY24 Barnstable District K through 5 door replacement project.
I'll second.
All right, having a motion made and seconded, all in favor.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Item 5.6, fiscal year 24, quarter three budget update.
Thanks, Kevin.
You're welcome. Have a good night.
Good evening. I'm here to report on the school department's financial condition through quarter three or March 31st. Uh, in your packet are three reports to assist with this. One is a full line item detail operating budget report, um, broken down by, uh, school site and department. The other report is a summary revolving fund report, uh, that lists out all our revolving funds. And then, uh, the third report is a summary capital budget report that details, um, all of our capital projects that are currently ongoing, some of which you just approved moving forward with. Um, overall, things are going well. Uh, our operating budget, which is the majority of our spending, uh, is tracking as expected, uh, through the fiscal year. There has been a little bit of flurry related to potential out-of-district placements that the special education department has been keeping their eyes on. Um, but projecting out to the end of the fiscal year, we anticipate closing, um, the books in a positive position. As it relates to revolving fund and capital budget, nothing major to report. Um, things are ongoing, uh, no issues, no concerns that, uh, have been highlighted either through our reporting, our analysis, or in conversations with, uh, department heads and, uh, and the administration. Happy to answer any questions. Uh, next time I'll be here related to the FY24, um, budget. Hopefully is after the books close with an FY24 summary, uh, sometime in August.
Yeah, Chris, thank you. I appreciate having the detail plus the summary materials. And, um, yeah, I, I agree, it all looked good.
Great.
Um, we're on track. Thank you.
Yep.
All right.
Thank you.
Any questions or comments? All right, item 5.7, approve grants, gifts, and donations. As?
Okay, uh, move to approve grants, gifts, and donations as presented in tonight's materials.
I'll second.
Uh, having a motion made and seconded, all in favor.
Aye.
And motion carries unanimously. Item 5.8, budget transfer authorization.
Move to approve budget transfer authorization as presented in tonight's materials.
I'll second.
And having a motion made and seconded, all in favor.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Item 5.9, approve accounts payable warrant, fiscal year 24, warrant number 44.
Move to approve accounts payable warrant FY24, warrant number 44 in the amount of $260,819.29.
I'll second.
Having a motion made and seconded, all in favor.
Aye.
And I'm abstaining, I didn't have a chance to look at it. I'd like to go back. I misspoke when I was talking about the goals. I was working from my memory. And I just pulled them up, and I just want to make sure that everybody's aware what the former goals were and that the minutes can reflected accurately. Um, we had the goal, um, that, uh, about the budget and, um, to revise the budget development process. And it was, we had a goal that was to have a systematic review of all the school committee policies. And that has never ended, but, um, and I don't think it ever will. And then to support the administration, teachers, staff, and parents in implementing procedures for the reopening. I knew there was something about COVID and I, you know, I, I did review these when I thought about having it on the agenda, but I didn't revisit them. So I think in the back of my head, I confused them because I didn't refer to anything. So we did not have a, we kept the goals to three. We didn't have a specific goal, but part of that COVID was to strengthen the community ties and the communication, um, during that, uh, turbulent time period. And thank goodness, we don't have to have anything for COVID again. Yes. Okay, so Jen, sorry, you were probably wondering what I was talking about because I'm sure you, you looked at this too. I should have asked that. I should have, um, had this posted to board docs to make your life easier, but it is under the, um, on our school committee page on the website.
We'll find it and review it.
Okay, so, um, item 6.0, executive session. Um, I would move to go into executive session, not to reconvene an open session to approve the school committee executive session minutes of, uh, March 20th, April 20th, 2024, and March 20th, 2024, and April 3rd, 2024, to discuss the terms and conditions of non-affiliated personnel contracts, a strategy session in preparation for negotiations with non-union, union personnel and/or contract negotiations with non-union personnel, Maureen Lovett and Katrory Malali, to discuss strategy and preparation for negotiation with the Barnstable Teachers Association, paraprofessional and administrative assistance units, and to discuss strategy and preparation for negotiations with the Barnstable Administrators Organization.
Second.
Having a motion, um, made and seconded, roll call vote. Jen?
Yes.
Peter?
Yes.
Andre?
Yes.
Mike?
Yes.
And I vote yes. This open meeting is adjourned.